All right, good evening. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, December 18th. I will note for the record that all three commissioners are here and present in the NatU Hill Room. We do have some, an amendment to our agenda, if you would please.
Yes, I move to add Resolution 2024-46 to our agenda. This is a resolution approving the renewal of the interlocal cooperative agreement between the City of Bloomington and Monroe County.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second, all in favor of amending our agenda, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. We'll put this first on our agenda since it is a, really a housekeeping item. So this morning, we, at our meeting, we already approved the building corporation interlocal agreement, but we did not do so under this heading of a resolution. Mr. Schilling, do you have anything you want to add about this resolution?
I think the one next to you is live.
Yeah, this is just a, an interlocal agreement, and according to state law, both parties to the inter-agreement have to enter into resolutions confirming the agreement, and so this is just a housekeeping matter to get that statutory requirement taken care of.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions from my colleagues?
Oh, would you like a motion? That we pass it? No, I'm, I've moved to add it to the agenda.
You go add it to the agenda, yeah. We do need a motion, please. I'm tired.
I move that we approve Resolution 2024-46, which approves the renewal of the interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Bloomington and Monroe County regarding the building code authority.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-46 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Now we'll move on to the key component of our evening. If you would make a motion, please.
I move that we approve Ordinance 2024-61, adoption of amendments to the Monroe County zoning ordinance, both text and maps, and subdivision control ordinance to be known as the county development ordinance, or CDO.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. If you could give us some introductory remarks, Planning Director Jellin, that would be great.
Sure. So tonight, I'll do a brief presentation about the Monroe County Development Ordinance. I want to start by saying that on Monday night, we did receive a favorable recommendation by the Plan Commission to forward this to the county commissioners, so that's no small feat to have a majority of a nine-member board send a positive vote to you all for your consideration, so we've gotten it to this point. So I just want to do a quick overview of what I'll be discussing tonight, so just our public engagement that we've done to date, as well as some main resources for the folks online or in person for how to use the new CDO, some of the highlights, and then moving forward, what to expect. So we started this process in 2020. We started doing a large amount of public engagement. We hired the current consultants that have helped us with this document, and we hosted between 2020 to now over 16 public engagement events. That has helped us to create the document that is dated December 9th, 2024, and is for your review for adoption. As of August 15th, 2024, we did send out postcard notices to all Monroe County owner, property owners in the county, and started the process to notify them of the official statutorily required hearing by the Plan Commission. That hearing was held on September 24th, 2024, though we received all, though we got through all of the public comment that night, we, the Plan Commission opted to continue that to October 1, 2024, and gave the public another chance to speak and hear all the comments that were in person or online. And then we extended the written comment until October 6, 2024. So we took all of that information, written and verbal, and we took it to the Plan Commission for a series of work sessions. Over 12 hours was spent with the commissioners and the Plan Commission to go over every single comment, whether it was a text change or zoning map change. And so the draft that's online, the Monroe CDO website, monroeCDO.com, that is dated December 9th, 2024, and the map that is online is reflective of all of those requests for changes and how the Plan Commission voted to favorably or unfavorably tell staff to make those changes and incorporate those into the document. So just a quick snapshot of the CDO website. This has been our main homepage for people that need quick information. There's a section called Useful Links on the homepage. There you'll find the latest draft of the CDO and the draft zoning map. Of course, if this is adopted tonight, this will also be located in the county, on the county website. It'll replace our current zoning ordinance and subdivision control ordinance, and the zoning map will also be updated onto our GIS system and replace the current zoning. So I want to pause by saying there were quite a few changes that the Plan Commission, the commissioners, agreed that should be incorporated into the CDO, but there were also some changes that we discussed that were brought up by the public that was discussed to be put on a list for future amendments for future changes to the CDO. Those included anything from the sliding scale subdivision reservation of 25 years for the parent parcel, all the way to reassessing the combination of a proposed use in the CDO about RV and boat storage. So there were two other amendments that were made after the initial work sessions. Those items are 12 and 13 on the screen. During one of the hearings of the Plan Commission, it was moved to add a review of the proposed 50-foot cars conservancy area delineation, which matches the stormwater ordinance but would be new to the CDO. And then there were also a few track changes identified by planning staff and legal department that were tabled for further review. I would like to point out just on this screen that some of these topics for future amendments will be better served once the CDO is in place, so that we start getting some of that data that we need to understand how this is impacting people in the county, what the demand is, such as the combination or separation of RV and boat storage. We're not sure how that will land, so after having this adopted, I think we will be able to come back to the Plan Commission and report back on how that's doing. But we will be starting in January 2025, a prioritization of this list to go forward with making amendments to the CDO. So as with any document, once it gets to a certain point, it's best to go ahead and, we feel it's best to go ahead and adopt what we have. It's the best foot forward that we have, and we can always make amendments to this. The last time our ordinance was updated was January 8th, 1997, so almost 28 years ago, and we are really in need of updating this ordinance, and we're excited to have it to this point. So online, the CDO zoning map, I just want to point out for a second that along with the CDO zoning map and what is online, there's going to be a few new overlays that we're proposing. So those include the airport noise and height overlay, which will coordinate with one of the chapters regarding the airport in the CDO, and also the Lake Lemon overlay. That will also be a new overlay that we are implementing. And then the environmental constraints area, 1 and 2. Previously, it was 1, 2, and 3. We've consolidated areas 2 and 3, and we've made that just area 2. So I just want to be transparent for that. There were some questions about how we came up with some of the development standards or design standards for some of the zones, so I just want to put two quick examples of what the current zoning is for some parcels around the county, and then what the CDO is consolidating or changing those zones to be. So on the screen, you see on the left-hand side, an RE 2.5, a state residential 2.5, and a conservation residential 2, which is also a 2.5 acre minimum lot size zone. Those are both being merged into the conservation residential 2.5 zone. The RE 2.5 was a zoning district that was adopted for areas near the City of Bloomington, and it largely coincides or reflects conservation residential. So getting rid of having two duplicate zoning standards and just making it one seemed like a move in the right direction for more predictability and ease of use for the public. So just a comparison of what the side and rear setbacks will be, just as an example. Under the current zoning ordinance, the side setback for the conservation residential and Ag residential is 15 feet, and the rear setback's 35 feet. Under the RE 2.5, the side setback is currently 30 feet and 60 feet, but you'll note I have asterisks here to note that there were over 20 use-specific exemptions to these setbacks, such as for detached garages, pool equipment. And in addition, the side setback automatically reduced to 15 feet without the need for a variance if the lot size was less than 2.5 acres, but it was pre-existing. So now we're moving to conservation residential 2.5, where we have a side setback and a rear setback similar to the conservation residential in the AgRR district. And I also put up at the top right that the CVR district roughly is comprised of 38% conservation residential, 31% RE 2.5, and 25% AgRR. There's a little bit of estate residential, but it's pretty minimal. So we tried to look at the standards that were in place, come up with a good average, and take some looks, take a look at some of the aerials in the, in the each zone, and come up with a good standard, and we believe that we've landed on a good, a good standard for, for the county. Similar, we did this for Residential 1, so that's actually merging three current zones, which all have a 1 acre minimum lot size requirement, which is a state residential, a state residential 1, and suburban residential. So again, on the left-hand side, you'll see the differences in the side and rear setback of what is current, and then on the right-hand side, you'll see the proposed setbacks. And then again, the Res District is comprised of 49% SR, so by far, that's the highest percent, which has the most limited setback, so 5-foot setback for the side and 10-foot rear setback. So we are going to be increasing those setbacks for those zones, which we try to take very seriously, because there are some developments that will already be within that, you know, 5 to 10 feet side setback. So we wanted to make sure that we came up with a standard that was helpful for moving forward, but we also are trying to reduce non-conformities. Okay, and just some of the highlights of the CDO. So we're excited to have a visual document with color and hyperlinks. We have what's called summary tables, or two-pagers, in, for each zone, so people can come into our office or go online, and they'll be able to have a really good idea of the full CDO with just two pages out of the entire, I believe, 521 pages at last check. So they'll be able to tell what their permitted uses are, conditional uses are, accessory uses, setbacks, lot size, et cetera, and they'll also have an idea of what the character of the area is with even some imagery for what it looks like and the different setbacks. Further, these summary tables will coordinate with the use table, which we have currently a similar use table, but the nice part about the CDO is that it will actually be hyperlinked. So I've highlighted in blue, you'll be able to click that link off to the right and go straight to the standard that you're seeking. So we're hoping that with a few clicks, people will be able to navigate this document much easier than the current. So just some high-level highlights of the CDO. It is combining the subdivision and zoning ordinances and creating a new zoning map for the county. We're consolidating the number of zones to about, to only 16 zones, and we're consolidating the number of uses from 372 to 174. Two new chapters are being proposed, which is lighting and the Lake Lemon overlay. However, we are getting rid of one chapter completely, which is the grading chapter, which has moved over to the stormwater ordinance. And then revisions are made throughout to use permissions, definition of standards, and more. A lot has happened in 28 years at the state level, as well as just in Monroe County, so we feel that it was a much-needed update and a good reflection of what's happening on the ground, as well as our comprehensive plans that we've been able to achieve during that time. So a few other highlights, since this is a top issue for a lot of the public regarding subdivisions. Something that we've heard a lot and that we were able to accommodate is that there's now going to be an allowance for subdivisions to be able to just submit a soil test instead of an actual septic permit for subdivision. This is going to allow people more flexibility for if and when they're ready to build a residence, they'll be able to locate the septic at that time, size it appropriately for the number of bedrooms, and that way they don't have to know that information at the time of subdivision. We're still going to be keeping the sliding scale minor, major, and administrative subdivision options, but we will want people to look at the new alignment that we are making with state statutes, especially as it relates to partial plat vacations and re-subdivisions. We think that the subdivision standards are much clearer and organized, so it'll be easier to go to, say, the section on roads and see all of the standards that are pertaining to roads, instead of skipping around between drainage, roads, and other topics. And then lastly, we are adding an inflation adjustment for subdivisions that have remaining public improvements. We're hoping this leads to quicker completion of those subdivisions, and as I noted on Monday at the Plan Commission meeting, unfortunately, I've had two subdividers walk away from their obligations to finish out subdivisions, and those dated back to 2005 and 2012. So just in one year, I've had two subdividers that are not going to be completing their requirements without possible action. So lastly, I just want to point out that the Indiana Code does ask for consideration of both the Plan Commission and the legislative body to pay reasonable regard when passing or adopting a new ordinance, and those include the comprehensive plan, the current conditions and character of the current structures and uses in each district, the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted, the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction, and responsible development and growth. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jellin. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I really appreciate how the hyperlinks work, because I was reviewing things. It was very, very easy to go back and forth, and the way that they're color-coded, I think, just also improves things. I think at one of the previous meetings also, you told us that if somebody wanted to come into your office and, that you would help them print off those two-page summaries as well. They don't have to have a computer at home, they don't have to have a printer at home. You'll, you'll be helping them in any way that, that they need, so I, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm sorry we didn't get to a new comp plan, but I will leave that to others. But I, I really appreciate all the work, the detail, the fact that this is much easier to use, I think, because it is simplified with reducing the zones, the uses, and I think it's more explicit in some ways, too, by adding those new chapters.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, having been involved in the last iteration of the comp plan, which was supposed to lead to this, it's kind of amazing to me to hear that once we've gotten here, we probably need a new comp plan, but it has taken a very, very long time, and this process actually started before 2020. It kind of restarted in 2020. So it's been going on for a very, very long time. No document ends up perfect. I am very impressed by this document. I think the hyperlinks, the usability of it, is something that hasn't been emphasized enough, and the public really should appreciate. With previous plans, it was pretty much necessary to go in and talk to a planner in the plan department to really figure out what you could do. I think this plan is really going to help a whole lot with that, and will probably help alleviate some of the demands on the plan department, so that they'll have time to do things like further perfect this plan, which is something we're looking forward to in the future. I particularly like to thank you for a couple of things that have gone into this plan. I think the Lake Lemon overlay has been really, really needed, and thank heavens, it's there now. That has been a really difficult situation for a long, long time. I'd also, I, I appreciate the fact that for subdivisions, you are only requiring a soil test now. My understanding was that if you wanted to subdivide previously, you had to get a septic permit, which then had to be renewed rather regularly with more expense each time it was renewed. So this is something that I think makes subdivision a more reasonable thing for people who are looking to do it at a small scale, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. I'll just say that I think this has been an immense effort, and I very, very much appreciate everything everyone has put into it. And I think, I think in the end, it reflects our community well, which is something that I really hope for. So I just want to give a huge thanks to the Plan Commission, to the planning staff, to our legal department, to all of the public who have helped us get to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to reserve my comments until the end, so without any questions for the planning staff at all? Okay, great. All right, with that, we will open this up for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. We ask that you provide your name and county of residence when you speak. We will be hearing from folks through Teams, and also at the podium here in the NatU Hill Room. We'll go ahead and, and alternate those comments. So if you're on Teams and you'd wish to comment, if you would raise your hand and leave it raised for us, we'll get to you in the order as you appear on the magic screens throughout the NatU Hill Room. So we'll go ahead and, and start with public comments. Anybody wish to make public comment on this item?
Thank you so much. Hello, my name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, which serves all of Monroe County in trying to foster economic vitality for the community. First, I wanted to express gratitude to the planning staff, especially Jackie Jellin, and everyone for all of the constant communication, to the Plan Commission for all of the time that they spent, to the commissioners. This was not a small effort to get to this point whatsoever, and especially the planning staff, I mean, just always so positive and, you know, just trying to communicate out, and so we're, we're very grateful for that. And overall, we appreciate the improvements that have been made, including but not limited to more simplified document, digitized, easier to navigate, educating the public even on this, because I think for the most part, people didn't even know what this was before, and how it, you know, impacts them in their daily life. We still have concerns about the CDO as it's written, which was outlined in our white paper that we communicated with our partners about, but I won't go into the details, because that's already been shared at length. We understand that the interest is in moving forward with this version, and I know that Plan Commission also spoke about going back to the tabled items. And so I just want to especially express our support for addressing those items at the earliest stage possible. The list of 13 tabled items for future work sessions are of particular interest to us, especially the sliding scale subdivisions, impervious cover, 50-foot setbacks, landscaping requirements, open space requirements, delegation of variances, cluster development, sewer options, and cars delineation. And I can say on behalf of the BEDC, we look forward to participating in the public process, and we're also very, very willing to try to connect with other folks in our circles that have either, you know, experienced any of these items or work with these things on a daily basis. When we hosted our meeting over the summer, there was great interest to it, and folks were coming out and saying, and bringing up things that we hadn't even thought of. And so I just hope that we can continue to be a partner and a resource to try to, you know, support those conversations moving forward. And so we, we look forward to doing that as early as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone online with their hand raised, so we will move on to the next speaker.
And good evening, Commissioners, again. This is Christopher Emery from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I want to echo a lot of Ms. Pearl from the BEDC's comments about the work done by Ms. Jellin, the, the plan staff, the Plan Commission. They were very transparent, got back to me on my questions very quickly. This does a lot of wonderful things. The public, the efforts for public comment and getting some feedback should be praised. We recognize the goal of the CDO will impact Monroe County's future. We support the overarching goals of smart growth, environmental preservation, infrastructure efficiency, and I think it achieves that largely. However, I remain concerned about several issues that might hamper future growth. I think we've mentioned the 13 outstanding items, areas of discussion that remain unaddressed, from housing affordability available, business zoned acreage, flexibility needed for commercial and industrial growth. The proposal to reduce high-density acreage and expand rural zoning could exacerbate some shortages, make it further difficult for workforce housing. Additional changes in commercial and business zone designation may hinder potential economic growth, but I think the main thing is where we're coming from on where I think we should put, push this back down to the Plan Commission, is the uncertainty. Going to these 13 outstanding items can lead to delay to projects, increased costs, reduced confidence of development processes. When developers are unsure of the rules and future changes, it does deters their ability to plan effectively, and it can slow growth. This uncertainty is not optimal for government either. It can lead to inconsistent policy applications, frequent decision challenges, and potential litigation. So with these unresolved issues, I would urge the commissioners to return to the CDO, return the CDO to the Plan Commission for further refinement. A development ordinance of this magnitude, it needs thorough review to ensure and promotes balanced growth while preserving, preserving the community character. I thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Still don't see any hands raised in Teams, so we'll come back to the podium here in the NatU Hill Room. Does anybody wish to offer a public comment?
Hi, I'm Richard Martin. On my way here this evening, I was reflecting on about 35 years of involvement in planning in Monroe County, serving in a variety of positions. I recall particularly the initiation of this project. As far as I could tell, it was about 10 years ago that we started, and with fits and stops in between, I, I want to congratulate you on finishing this up. Combining the subdivision and the zoning ordinance into a single document, I think, is a major leap forward, particularly in that the previous document, zoning document, was actually cobbled together from two different ordinances because of the change in the two-mile fringe zoning. I think you've done an admirable job. The staff has done an excellent job with outreach to the public and getting people involved. I want to caution you, this is the end of one part of this, the beginning of another. You have more things to do going forward, and I encourage you to not wait too long to get started, because they take so long to get done. I also wanted to, to bring forward what I learned about planning, was that for every situation that comes before a Plan Commission or a BZA or yourselves, someone wins and someone loses. That's the nature of planning. We cannot please all of the people all of the time. We cannot do everything, every place. Simply not possible. We need to be considerate of everyone's needs over the We need to be considerate of everyone's needs over the entire county and not be too focused on one particular area. I know this is very hard to do. We have this particular problem of city-county interaction at our border and how we're going to handle that, which is still up in the air, unfortunately, and is causing a great deal of consternation for many people. Perhaps now that we have a firm zoning ordinance in place that resolves former discontinuities, we can start to address that issue in a more reasonable way, and I would ask you to do so in an expeditious manner. But thank you very much, and kudos to the staff. They've done a wonderful job. I really think they did. And the Plan Commission was very supportive throughout this whole process, and I think did a great job of making sure that the needs of everyone were addressed in the process. So thank you again.
Thank you so much, and I do want to thank you, Mr. Martin, not only for your current service on the Redevelopment Commission, but for your past glorious service on the Plan Commission, and you got us started with the comp plans and really wise counsel always, and really appreciate your guidance throughout this whole process. And we do owe a debt of gratitude to you and all of the past members of the Plan Commission. Thank you. Anyone on Teams wish to speak, please raise your hand. Anyone else in the NatU Hill Room? Mr. Askins?
Good evening, Commissioners. Dave Askins with the B-Square Bulletin, downtown Bloomington resident, which is also Monroe County.
You go.
Although not the subject of this ordinance. It's my habit, as you know, to use the public mic to ask questions. For the benefit of everyone, I will state that I understand that there is no legal requirement that questions get answered, but I don't think there is a prohibition against asking them. And because of the timeliness of this particular issue, I'm hoping that somebody might say a couple of words about annexation. And by timeliness, I mean yesterday there was a Court of Appeals hearing. And so assuming that the Commissioners do not heed the advice of the Greater Chamber, Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and go ahead and adopt tonight, and this is in place, if eventually some or all of the annexation areas are in fact annexed because the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court says they have to be annexed, I'm certain that there is some kind of an orderly process by which that territory gets zoned. Maybe it gets inherited, who knows? I'm sure it's orderly. And I was hoping that somebody might tonight just sketch that out, maybe a sentence or two, maybe a paragraph. I'm not asking for like a whole dissertation on it. But I was hoping that somebody might sort of take on that topic, just so that residents might have some kind of an assurance of what might happen if annexation were to go through. Thanks.
Thank you for that great question. I'm going to actually toss this over to Mr. Schilling for a good legal answer to your question, and then I have a partial answer as well.
Yeah, I think typically when an annexation ordinance is adopted for an area, they will identify what zone that it will be assigned once it comes into the jurisdiction.
And that would go to the City Plan Commission in that case. Okay. My commentary on it is that, as everyone's well aware, I've been fighting the annexation process on behalf of county residents who are concerned about tax increases and being pushed out of their homes with unaffordable taxes. And that was a decision that I did not come to lightly, and it was one that I came to after hearing from residents who were going to be impacted. For me, there's, the annexation threat is always on my mind because of those residents. But what we, what I do is I say, what if it's not annexed? How should it be zoned? Because it's in the county right now. It's not in the city jurisdiction. And so we have to, in my mind, always behave as though it's a county issue. And part of this is made more complicated by the city's refusal to extend sewer. It led to the airport losing out on a major development grant for a terminal. It has led to our inability to pursue a project with Habitat for Humanity on South Walnut, which would have provided housing for folks who are low income. It has impacted a lot of people, and that's the city's decision, that's not our decision. So that makes the annexation question complex, but it doesn't change the fact that we are here to act on behalf of all county residents outside of, in this case, outside of the city of Bloomington and the town of Elsville, who have, who are under the jurisdiction of county planning. And I don't know if my colleagues want to add anything else.
I think you and Mr. Schilling covered it rather thoroughly.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you for the question. I appreciate that. I don't see any hands raised on Teams, so if anyone else in the NatU Hill Room wishes to speak, please come to the podium. Please give us your name and county of residence.
Good evening. Wendy Goodlett. I am a Monroe County resident, have been for 20 years. I want to echo Jen Pearl's comments about the process and the end product. I also want to say Jackie and her team have been incredibly responsive, professional, and transparent, and I appreciate that. But I want to talk regarding the zoning maps, and I think it's incumbent upon me to do that on behalf of people who are planning or dreaming of becoming homeowners in our community. So this is on behalf of Habitat for Humanity that I'm making these remarks. By proactively opting for predominantly large lot zoning, you are sending a clear message that unless you can afford an acre or more of land and a single-family detached home, you are not welcome outside of city limits. This is not about developers, many of whom have been unfairly villainized in this process. It is about our community members and the opportunities that are being denied to them. An updated comprehensive plan is necessary, and the door needs to be left open for smaller lots and a variety of housing types that are desperately needed in our community. Thank you.
Again, seeing no hands raised on Teams, does anybody else in NatU Hill wish to offer Wait, we do have... Are hand raised on Teams? No.
No.
Okay. All right. Last call for public comment?
I'm Margaret Clements, and I'm a former President of the Plan Commission and current Vice President of the Plan Commission. And I just really want to pay some attention to how open and how wholehearted the Commissioners have been and our planning staff have been and the Plan Commission has been in the 16 listening sessions that we've had in various locations, under various circumstances, in parks, in libraries, here in the NatHill Room as well, and all the emails that you've received and tracked and shared with us over the years, really. And each single comment, every single comment that we received, we deliberated as a Plan Commission over the substance of the comment and its effect on the overall global prospect of planning for Monroe County. And I think that was a very difficult challenge, but it's something that everyone rose to achieve, and this CDO is a communication of the public's input and our having really wholeheartedly listened to the public and to the BEDC and to the real estate developers and to the building community and to the environmentalists and to the homeowners and to the people who currently live in homes that they can afford and would like to remain there for their last years or their last decades. And I think, and also, we gave homage to people's concept of a way of life that they chose to invest in. So there was a lot to balance, but I think this is the best possible outcome. I can't believe we did it, and I want to congratulate you and thank you because I'm really proud to be part of a civil unit that really does listen, and I don't see that enough elsewhere. And we have listened, we have heard, and not every decision was made in 100% agreement with each other or with the person requesting it, but we did fully, wholeheartedly consider it and the consequences it would have. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for your service as well, for this, for the Plan Commission. You've done amazing work. Thank you. Any other public comments? We'll go ahead and close the public comment period. I wanted to see if my colleagues had any additional comments to make. I'll start with Commissioner Jones.
Well, I think I really pretty much said how I feel about this document, and I'd have to say that nothing I heard tonight has changed that feeling. I do understand that there are always people who are looking for different outcomes possibly than other people, and unfortunately, you just cannot make everyone happy. I think this document has turned into a pretty good compromise, and really, people should be grateful that we have compromised to this extent and that this is a document that reflects what has been heard from the community as a whole.
Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
I also want to say many, many thanks to the planning staff, to the Plan Commission. A lot went into this and to our legal department. This is a, this document is a starting point for things. It's not written in stone. Changes can be made, adjustments can be made, and while it sometimes seems a bit onerous, we have gone through multiple rezones for different properties, and that's a possibility as well. This does not prevent the development of small places that have smaller lots, but we have to have sewer hookup for those to occur, and our hands are tied at this point. I hope that that changes and changes soon because I too would like to see workforce and affordable housing available in our community. And I think we supported that by trying to work with Habitat to have a 72-unit development on South Walnut Street that we weren't able to do.
Anything else, or did I say? Okay, thank you. So I have a few comments to make. I do want to first and foremost thank the public for their constant and consistent presence and respectful dialogue, and it is important to have that, and this is the 17th public engagement session, and we couldn't do that without the public. So a huge thank you. We do appreciate it. And again, yes, as my colleagues pointed out, as Mr. Martin pointed out, you know, you can't make everyone happy, but this is a really great document, and I'm really proud of it. The planning staff has done amazing work, as noted and noticed by the public, and they answered questions, they managed the listening sessions, they provided information to questions that were phoned in, dropped in, however it may have happened, in addition to doing their day-to-day tasks. And managing those revisions was no easy feat. I know it wasn't, and everyone chipped in and really made it happen. I do want to take a moment to thank members of the Plan Commission, both current and past, because your input and your hard work and your dedication to the residents of Monroe County has helped shape what we're doing today. And those committee members and the Plan Commission itself spend a lot of time reviewing petitions, driving around the county. I know the county better than I ever thought I could, and really, they put in a lot of hard work as they proceed. The planning staff worked with stormwater, building, health, highway to make this happen. The language, as we've noted, is clear, readable as possible. I mean, this is still a legal document, so it's not going to be a simple read, but the two-page summary documents are fabulous. The graphics help so much, especially when people understanding what a setback is and where it is, and the hyperlinks as well. I do want to note that, and just in response to some of the things that have been mentioned tonight, because we do listen, that I hear the concern about uncertainty, but the items that have been identified for consideration for amendment, as on the screen, as listed on the screen, are already in the CDO but could be amended. And yes, there is a little bit of uncertainty there, but it doesn't mean that there are holes in the CDO that have to be filled, right? Does that make sense? So I'm just grateful that they've been identified. We've gone through that list. There will be more, I'm sure, and staff is great about letting us know, hey, we're getting a lot of these issues on understanding what this means and interpreting that, and we address those as they come up. And everyone has different interests, and we, again, cannot make everyone happy, but I do, one thing I do want to note is that the biggest changes are simplifications rather than complications, and I really appreciate that about this document. The areas that are getting rezoned most heavily are those that are currently under city zoning jurisdiction from back when there was a two-mile fringe, and that one no longer exists, and so this will be a lot easier for staff and for the public and for the Plan Commission to address any petitions in those areas. I would ask that the folks at Habitat for Humanity, who I have great respect for, you know, this body, this Board of Commissioners, have ensured that we dedicated a lot of ARPA dollars to the Osage Place. We ensured, we helped ensure infrastructure development when the prices skyrocketed. We supported and have supported the eight homes being built, and again, we tried to do another project. I'm sorry, I've got a little something in my throat. This entire county cannot be small lot subdivisions. We do not have the built environment nor the natural environment to support it. This whole county cannot be the city. I would ask the city about sewer service. I would also ask the City Plan Commission why they are prioritizing the building of student residences over housing that could be attainable for the community. That's a decision they've made. Now they've pushed the housing demand onto the county where it doesn't really belong, and that's an unfortunate... And that's an unfortunate thing, so the questions need to be asked. So one thing I want to highlight, and this is something that Mr. Martin was part of, and I remember working on this with him and others on the Plan Commission at the time, a long time ago, it's been a long time on that Plan Commission. One of the things, one of the principles in the comprehensive plan, which no, should not be renewed, revised, it is going to be amended based on the CDO if it passes. But one of the key principles is keep urban urban and rural rural. And because if somebody moves into a rural area, they move there because it's a rural area. And we have to appreciate the residents that are here and those that we have, and, and listen to them as well. But again, I think this is a good document. It has a lot of compromise in it and things I don't like about it, but I'm happy to support it because this is what, this is what governance looks like. And again, thank you again to the public for all of their participation and their consistent, respectful dialogue with us, and keep, keep those comments coming. We need that. We need to hear from all of you. Sorry. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Schilling if he would be so kind as to, now I have to get the amendment number. Sorry. I mean, what is our, what is our ordinance number? I'm sorry.
Get back to that. Sorry.
Yeah, I had it. Oh, there we go. 61. Yeah. I didn't, I didn't want to get it confused with the other thing we just did. Okay. So I'd like to call for a vote on ordinance 2024-61, please.
And this is to adopt it?
To adopt it, yes, as outlined.
All right. A vote yes is a vote for adoption. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. I do have a motion I would like to make, and this is within the keeping of the process as outlined by state statute. I'm going to move to send a request, so bear with me, this is a long motion, to send a request for the following revisions to the zoning map to the Plan Commission for a hearing at the earliest opportunity. Planning Director Jelen has a list of the corresponding parcel numbers for both of these areas, and I've asked her if she would put these maps up as I go through some general street names. The first area includes the following streets or portions of the following streets. West Johnson Avenue, West Evergreen Drive, North Kimball Drive, West Beaumont Lane, West Benham Lane, West Fifth Street, and West Le Jack Lane. Note that the pink items on that map are limited business zones and are not included in this amendment. The second area includes a port, all or a portion of the following streets. South Corey Lane, West Corey Drive, South Anna Lee Lane, West Piper Lane, South Berry Drive, West Wiley Street. Note here on this map that the areas in light gray are a planned unit development, and the areas in pink are a, are zoned limited business and are not included in this amendment. Both of these areas contain older established neighborhoods. Most of these homes utilize septic, if not all. The area also has a number of cars features which were identified by the city of Bloomington as early as 2003 in their own study. The latter neighborhood was granted a historic overlay at this morning's Commissioners' meeting, and this is in keeping with the current conditions and character of current structures and uses in each district, one of the guiding principles for adopting the CDO. So this is an amendment to the zoning map that we're, I would like to move that we ask the Plan Commission to consider and to bring back to us.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions from my colleagues?
Good ideas.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry for the long motion. All those in favor of approving this motion for revision of the zoning map being brought to the Plan Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. And I want to mention, you know what I'm left out? The zones would be residential one. Sorry, I didn't.
I'll second that change, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. All in favor of the motion amendment? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sorry about that. Yes, so these would all be residential one? Yeah. These would all become residential one, based again on the character of these two neighborhoods. All right. Sorry about that. Should have put that first and foremost. Okay. So with that, again, thank you to the public, and we are adjourned. Happy holidays.